We're very privileged to have Father Joe Aquino from St. Anne's Catholic Church to lead his invocation, followed by the pleasure of allegiance by Officer Shanice McDonald from Precinct 2. So those who will enable, please stand.
As we place ourselves in the presence of the All-Poweful, we pray, God, you are the Lord of the sun and the moon and the stars and the sea and all that dwells in them. You are Lord of men and women. We are made into your own image, and you care for us very much. You call us very good. You make us stewards of your creation. To your stewards of governance, grant a spirit of wisdom and understanding and of right judgment. For these individuals were chosen by your people to give them direction leading to the common good for all of the citizens of this county. In this season of new life, guide and direct these chosen ones. May their lives be an example of peace, justice, and truth, and so proclaim your kingdom here on earth. Help those who are called to their office to inspire their brothers and sisters to live in full human life for which you have called us to bear. And we ask you a blessing this evening. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father and Officer. Okay, a couple admin notes here. For those who are watching at home, we'll be pulling, we'll be moving consent item number 21 and 22, moving them over to the regular agenda to discuss tonight. So they'll be after the DOT part of our meetings. And then DOT, the item number 32, there's been some wording in the explanations, but the item as proposed stands. All right, tonight we have two presentations. It's my honor to introduce Dr. Tanya Brinkley, President of American Society for Public Administration of the Georgia Chapter, to make a presentation of Michael Murphy for the 2019 Distinguished Public Service Practitioner Award. So if Dr. Brinkley, Michael Murphy, and Vanessa, if you'd come up and join Michael, please.
Good evening. I'm here to present Michael M. Murphy with the American Society for Public Administration, Georgia Chapter, Distinguished Public Service Practitioner Award. And I wanted to tell you that he won this award, one of two, for the whole state, for his particular contributions in leadership, innovation, and operational excellence. As his colleague in Cobb County and much of the work we've done over the past two years, I am particularly inspired by his calm demeanor and his diplomatic manner. If you know Mike, you know that that's exactly who he is. I have worked with him in our work together to help unsheltered persons in Cobb County, and I'm particularly getting more interested in his work with his help with the middle-class citizens that find themselves on the fringes of disenfranchisement. The award reads, 2019 Distinguished Public Administration Practitioner, Michael M. Murphy, Cobb County Government Special Assistant to the Chairman. Don't worry about that. That happens all the time.
Ten words. Well, first of all, I want to thank you, President, and the members of ASPA. And this is a tremendous moment for me. I value this ground here very, very much because many of my colleagues with the county have gotten well-deserved awards, and I'm glad to be, to join them. And I thank you very, very much for the opportunity. It's a pleasure working with you, and I enjoy the opportunity that I have to move progress in this wonderful county and the city of Smyrna. So, thank you. And I'm proud also to enjoy it with my better half. And even some people have said that they'd heard I had a daughter, and so I want to correct the record. She's my wife.
Commissioner Burrow now has a presentation to make.
Good evening, everyone. If I could have the District 44 Toastmasters Group up here. Tonight, we're recognizing Toastmasters District 44 in recognition of their annual conference that will be held here in Marietta in May. So, I have a proclamation for you fine folks. Roxanne, you want to come over here? Roxanne's a county employee too, and lives in my district, so she asked us to do this. And we are proud and honored to read this proclamation tonight. Whereas Toastmasters International is a nonprofit educational organization that is a world leader in communication and leadership development with a membership of 357,000. The organization has more than 1,606,000 clubs in 143 countries, providing individuals with the tools needed to effectively communicate in their personal and professional lives while gaining confidence to lead others. And whereas the First Georgia Toastmasters Club was chartered in Atlanta on December 13, 1944, Toastmasters Clubs have since expanded throughout the state while remaining dedicated to the Toastmasters International values of integrity, respect, service, and excellence. And whereas representing more than 200 clubs with more than 4,300 members, Georgia Toastmasters District 44 mentors, supports, and leads individuals to improve their leadership and communication skills. And whereas the 2019 District 44 Annual Conference will be held in Marietta on May 3 and 4, and will emphasize success in the global marketplace, thereby following the theme Waves of Change, Oceans of Opportunities. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize the many contributions of Georgia Toastmasters District 44, and welcome all members celebrating their conference in our community. This event will empower Georgians to develop skills that lead to a greater self-confidence and personal growth. This is the 23rd day of April 2019.
So first, I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for all their support. We actually have a club that meets here in this building every Thursday at noon, for all of you out there that aren't Toastmasters quite yet. And we celebrate our 20-year anniversary in September. So it's been amazing to have this opportunity, and we really appreciate you and the board for all your support. And I'd like to introduce our District Director, Kim Gibson, to say a few words.
Thank you, Roxanne. Good evening, everyone. We are so honored and privileged to receive this recommendation and proclamation from Cobb County. It's just one that really resonates with us as we strive to share 4,000 members strong who are wanting self-development and communication and leadership skills. And as Roxanne opened up that call to action for everyone to join, everyone here, it's just one that resonates with us. We all want to be our best selves, no matter what your walk in life is. Toastmasters can help you move out of your comfort zone, and that's where the learning and magic truly happens. So thank you again for your time, and thank you again for the award and recognition.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here, too.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow. All right, we have a couple of public hearings tonight. I'll let Jason Gaines start us out in the first one on community development.
Thank you and good evening. I'm Jason Gaines with Cobb Community Development. This past January, the Board of Commissioners conducted a public hearing regarding items for consideration within the 2019 Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Amendments document. During that hearing, the Board requested staff to bring forward additional CPA items for mid-year consideration. So tonight, we have four items. These items were previously heard and by the Planning Commission earlier this month, and they have offered a recommendation on each of them. So what I will do is read each item into the record, and then turn it over to the chairman to conduct a public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, you all will discuss and offer a motion, and we'll do that for each of the four items. So if you're ready to begin. The first item for consideration tonight is Commission Proposal 2-2, or CP 2-2, which is located in Commission District 2, on the east side of Johnson Ferry Road, north of Lower Roswell Road, and south of Hampton Lakes Drive and Sherfield Drive. The proposed change is from Community Activity Center and High Density Residential to Neighborhood Activity Center, High Density Residential, and Medium Density Residential. The Planning Commission's recommendation for this item was approval.
Commissioner Rod.
Do you want a public hearing, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. You're right. Okay, so the rules for this public hearing are that there's unlimited number of speakers, and each speaker gets three minutes. And so that, I now declare this public hearing open on, for comments on CPT 2-2. Anyone like to speak to this issue? Yes, ma'am. Please, just let us know who you are and where you live. And it's good to have you back again.
All right. There should be copies for all of you to at least see the summary or the pictures. Hello?
They're on the screen also.
Yes. Okay. Hello, my name is Sarah Patterson. I am a 25-year resident of Hamptons of Old Town. That is the subdivision that's highlighted on this first slide. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Architectural Studies from the University of Illinois, and the following is based on my experience as a resident and my background in architecture, planning, and design. I think that the comprehensive plan is a very influential guide, and I agree with the changes being made for the three established subdivisions as MDR, next slide, please, and changing the Lower Roswell Road area to NAC. However, I do disagree with the choice to change the Office Park 2 of Office and the Athletic Club to HDR. The intentions to assist providing a transitional step down from commercial and office use to less intense residential can be achieved in a way that is better, that better facilitates growth while truly preserving and protecting the existing stable neighborhood character. Next slide, please. I believe that making the two office parks in the middle along with the Athletic Club, Medium Density Residential can achieve this. Old Town Parkway is an established transitional area in its own right. It can do most of the heavy lifting in regards to transitioning from high density and intensity to lower density intensity for residential. Next slide, please. So the south of Old Town Parkway could be high-density commercial residential and whatnot, and the north side of Old Town Parkway can be lower-density residential. Next slide, please. The view of transition is out in the open. As you can see, Old Town Parkway on the left side, that's where the urgent care and its office buildings would be, and the current high-density residential project is. And then you have Old Town Parkway itself, which has lots of vegetation and trees. And on the right side, you have where the office buildings currently are, which could be medium-density residential along with the two subdivisions, Old Town Colony and Hamptons of Old Town, which are medium-density residential. So I believe that changing the category to medium-density residential for this area that touches these medium-density residential established subdivisions would serve this area still a little bit better to protect what's already here and also improve for future residents without taking away from what you have. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Jill Flam. I'm with East Cobb Civic Association. We agree that Old Town, first of all, I'd like to state, as you have already heard, Old Town Parkway is not a traditional collector road. It ends in a roundabout and is the only way in or out for the surrounding homes and businesses, which includes Northside Hospital Doctor's Center plus an additional doctor's building, which has already been approved. Care must be taken through planning to not overload this road, as there is no way to provide additional egress and ingress to this area. While we agree with most of the proposed comp plan changes that will now reflect what has actually been built and prevent the overloading of Old Town Parkway, we do have a couple of recommendations for some additional changes. The Old Town Athletic Club, 4950 Old Town Parkway, has existing medium-density housing on two sides, commercial and high-density housing on the other two sides. Its sole access is a roundabout at the end of Old Town Parkway. We recommend that a note be added that the density of any proposed development on this property be toward the low end of high-density residential, if not just changing it to medium-density residential. This would provide a good transition from HDR to the existing MDR in the neighborhoods. And number two, the two office buildings contained in the study, 4901 and 4865 Old Town Parkway, are surrounded by existing MDR. We recommend that this be further amended to MDR, or at the very least, a note added that the density of any proposed development also be kept at the low end of HDR. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. All right, further comments? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Now, Commissioner Rod.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. She's already leaving. She's walking in the back. It's good to have you back. I forget your name, but it was good to have you back.
Sarah.
Sarah. Thanks. And listening to your discussion and some of the discussion that I've had with Jason, I tend to agree with you, even though, so what I'm going to do, Jason, I'm going to change it a little bit from what we have in the book. So make a motion to approve CP 2-2 from the existing categories of HDR, CAC, and to MDR with the dividing line being Old Town Parkway. And Old Town Parkway will be MDR also. The area defined as ZD17 will be HDR. And then, as depicted in the proposed page, the part in pink will be a NAC. So the only thing that changes is the high-density residential that's on Old Town Parkway and the roundabout will be medium-density residential. And then, so you've got all that, Jason?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that'd be my motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question. Pass is five to zero.
All right, our next item is CP 3-2, located in Commission District 3, east of Bell's Ferry Road, north and south of Piedmont Road, and southwest of Cobb Place Manor Drive. The proposed change is from medium-density residential to low-density residential. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right, now, same rules. Just let us know who you are. If you come up to speak, you have three minutes and unlimited number of speakers. So I now declare this public hearing open on addressing CP 3-2. Would anyone like to address this issue? Would anyone like to address this issue? Seeing none, I now declare this public hearing closed. And Commissioner Burrow.
Yes. We did have a couple of letters from neighborhood groups, one in support and one just bringing out some road issues for Bell's Ferry. So this is, I guess, a result of a zoning and revisiting the area of surrounded by residential and, but zoned, or the land use was medium-density residential. And the impact to the surrounding neighborhoods that are low-density residential in the area and zoned R20 is why this is coming forward. So I would make a motion to approve CP 3-2, and also note that the Planning Commission did recommend approval. Correct, Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a question. Pass is five to zero. Thank you, Commissioner.
The next item is CP 4-3, located in Commission District 4, on the north and south sides of Wendy Hill Road and the west and east sides of Austell Road. The proposed change is from Neighborhood Activity Center, Low Density Residential, and Public Institutional to Community Activity Center and Medium Density Residential. The Planning Commission recommends approval for all of the proposed changes, with the exception of the proposed change to Community Activity Center.
Okay, unlimited number of speakers, three minutes each. Please let us know who you are and where you live. So that, I now declare this public hearing open on CP 4-3. Would anyone like to speak on this issue? Would anyone like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I now declare this public hearing closed. And Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you, Chairman. Jason, can you discuss Planning Commission recommendations?
Sure. So on this item, the exception was that the Planning Commission recommended against the change from Neighborhood Activity Center to Community Activity Center primarily for the reason of the ability to transition out some of the more dilapidated, underutilized properties in the area, because as it currently stands, there's a lot of general commercial zoning in the area. And when a property that's zoned GC typically is grandfathered, but if it's in the Neighborhood Activity Center, future land use category, once someone else comes in to utilize a property zoned GC, they can't use it as it's zoned GC. It triggers an automatic requirement to rezone. And as the Planning Commission sees it, that's a strong tool to have, and to relinquish that would be a detriment to the area. So that was generally their perspective when it came to that recommendation.
I'm actually in agreement with the PC recommendation, and I would like to share openly that this future land use map change is a result of a study done by the Urban Land Institute to better create a sense of place in the Osborne-Milford area. And they brought together part of their leadership team, which consists of people in the banking, real estate community, to take a look at this area. And they brought forward a plan that was shared with community members there who were thrilled to see someone take a look at that community to see how they can spur investment and interest. So with that, I move that we, that we support CP 4-3 with the change of the Community Activity Center to the NAC designation, however, keeping the other NAC designated, MDR designated areas the same with the attached text amendments.
Motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Call a question. Pass is five to zero. Thank you, Commissioner.
And our final item is CP 4-4, also in Commission District 4, located on the north and south sides of Milford Church Road and the east and west sides of Hicks Road. The proposed change is from Low Density Residential and Medium Density Residential to Neighborhood Activity Center and Medium Density Residential. The Planning Commission's recommendation was approval, with the exception of the proposed change to Neighborhood Activity Center on the northeast quadrant of Hicks Road at Smyrna Powder Springs, Milford Church Road.
Okay. This'll be the last one, but same rules, unlimited number of speakers, three minutes each. Just let us know who you are and where you live. And with that, I now declare this public hearing open on CP 4-4. Would anyone like to address the board on this issue? Would anyone like to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, I now declare this public hearing closed. And Commissioner Cupid, I believe this is yours again.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Jason, can you share Planning Commission recommendations on this one?
Okay. Again, the recommendation was to approve all of the proposed changes, with one exception. This happened to be a residentially used parcel on the northeast corner of the intersection that I mentioned. It is a residential use. It's a rather small parcel that doesn't have a lot of road frontage on either Smyrna Powder Springs Road or Hicks Road, and the thought was that it wasn't viable by itself as a potential commercial use. So, that was the reasoning behind the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Sure.
That corner?
We don't have... We didn't do a slideshow for this, and that's an oversight on my part.
It's where it provides CP 4-4 in your book on the northeast quadrant. You see Hicks Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the north parcel of Milford Church. You'll see a small piece there. It's the top.
Okay.
I got the color one here.
It's just too small. But that's okay.
So, we're talking about this area right here, labeled CP 4-4 on the northeast, the northeast quadrant of the intersection.
Okay. So, that will remain residential?
Okay. It's a residential.
LDR.
It's a residential. It is currently a residential use with a residential Future Land Use designation. I believe it's LDR, but yes.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I move that we adopt the Planning Commission recommendations for CP 4-4 with keeping the northeast quadrant residential and adopting the other changes to Neighborhood Activity Center and Medium Density Residential.
We have a second. Any discussion? Call a question. Pass is five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, sir.
Now, we have Stanley from Public IS Information Services to conduct our second series of public hearings.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We request the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for employment of professional services to provide program management and expert services for the design, plan, migration, and implementation of networking, compute, and storage technologies for Cobb County's new data center. Professional services for this project are expected to exceed $100,000. Notice of public hearing for this project was advertised in the Marietta Daily Journal on April 5, 2019. At this time, we request you hold the public hearings advertised. This request is for the public hearing only. Once a vendor has been selected, an agenda item will be brought back to the Board of Commissioners for approval.
Okay. Commissioner Gammel, it's yours. Public Services. We do need to have a public hearing. And then, we're gonna have a vote. We don't need a vote. This is just a public hearing.
Just a public hearing tonight. So, we'll bring it back when we have a vendor selected.
Okay. We do. I'm gonna answer. I just want to prepare you. Shuffle that very nicely. Okay, so, on this one here, the rules are the same, the three minutes, unlimited number of speakers. Just let us know, please, who you are and where you live. And with that, I declare a public hearing open on this Information Services item to conduct, procure services that may exceed $100,000 for design, planning, migration, and implementation of a network, computer network. So, that, would anyone like to address the board on this issue? Did anyone like to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, I now declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff. You have no role. Okay, so now, we have public comment. And here's what I'd like to propose to the... We have 16 people signed up. Is that correct? All right. Last time, we had 17, and we broke it up into two segments, and each speaker got four minutes. So, what I'd like to propose to the board is, for discussion, is we break it up into two segments of eight speakers each. Each gets four minutes. There, at the risk of creating a problem, the regular agenda tonight is not very long, but that isn't, that's not meant to limit the discussion among the board, but doing agenda prep yesterday, there were pretty straightforward issues. We did add two more to regular, but I don't see that adding too much more to the ordinary discussion involving regular agenda items. So, if you're concerned about we're putting you off too farther down the load, trust me, it's not gonna be that much of a weight if the order of business is as I expect. So, with that, is there anybody in agreement on that part? Eight minutes? No, do eight, 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 eight up front, four minutes each, do the regular agenda, make the appointments, and then come back and hear the last eight. Okay? So, with that, everybody understand what we're doing here? We'll do eight speakers. Each will get four minutes. Please let us know who you are and where you live. And you'll get, again, you'll get four minutes, and we'll do eight of you, and then do the regular agenda, and then we'll do the last eight after we do the regular agenda. Okay? So, with that, please call the first speaker.
The first speaker is Jennifer Mays.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Mays, and I live in Whitlock Heights in Marietta in District 1. I'm here to request that you consider a humane pet acquisition ordinance for Cobb County, one that would prevent the sale of dogs and cats at pet stores. First, I would like to thank you for your overall service, and specifically for your support of Cobb County Animal Services by Commissioner Burrell's initiative Superior Pets for Patriotic Pets, and the $520,000 approved for renovations to the shelter. Thank you very much. Like many other animal control facilities in the state, Cobb is crowded with pets. According to the Georgia Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, one of the key causes of pet overpopulation is commercial breeding, also known as puppy mills. Approximately 1/4 of dogs in shelters are pure breeds. Overpopulation continues to persist despite shelters and organizations actively working to decrease the number of homeless pets, with programs including free spay and neuter, free microchipping, transfer of animals from areas of surplus to areas of short supply. Stopping the influx of puppies from puppy mill commercial breeders could reduce this number and lessen the financial burden on our government. I, along with many other constituents, believe that passing this ordinance could benefit Cobb County by, one, allowing our county to take a stand against puppy mill cruelty; two, by protecting consumers from a deceptive pet store sales model that can result in a sick or behaviorally challenged dog, for which treatment could cost thousands of dollars; three, by protecting consumers from public health risks related to sick animals purchased from pet stores; and four, by shifting the market towards humane sources, such as animal control, shelters, rescues, and responsible breeders who sell directly to the public. Please note that the closure of pet stores is not a goal of this ordinance. As seen with other pet stores that have embraced a humane model and work with local rescues to adopt animals, their businesses have thrived and profited from the sale of pet products and services. The community and their customers love the collaborative relationship between the stores and the rescues, and because they have a positive experience with the store, they'll come back for future purchases. And as we all know, customer retention is a key component of a successful business. This ordinance will also not affect a consumer's ability to obtain a cat or dog of his choice directly from a breed-specific rescue or from a breeder who consumers can directly interact with to see the conditions in which the dogs or cats are bred. Over 95% of the American Kennel Club's affiliated breed clubs state in their ethics codes that breeders should not sell to pet stores. Good, responsible breeders in our county and state should not get looped in with commercial breeding puppy mill factories. So, I ask you to join over 300 localities across the U.S., including 10 here in Georgia, Sandy Springs, Sonoya, Canton, Holly Springs, Woodstock, Centerville, Waleska, Ball Ground, the City of Atlanta, and Fulton County, in adopting a humane pet acquisition ordinance for Cobb County to protect the residents of Cobb County and the pets we love, and help us fulfill our county's motto, "Cobb County Expect the Best." Thank you for your time and consideration from me and my animals. And finally, I'd like to give a shout out to all the fine public safety personnel in the room. I support you guys, too. Thank you.
Could you do me, could you do me a favor?
Sure.
Could you get with Millie there and set up an appointment to see me, all right?
Sure thing.
Because I'll need to sit down with you and the county attorney to see what is we can or can't do with regard to this proposal.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
The next speaker is Andrea Miller.
Good evening, Commissioners. I hope you guys are well. So, great to see you again. Thanks for having me. Excuse me. Hopefully, remember that my name's Andrea Miller, and I've been a Cobb County resident now for eight years. And you know, I love living in Smyrna and trying to make things better for all the residents here in Cobb County. I'm here to request that you please consider a humane pet acquisition ordinance for Cobb County, one that would prevent the sale of dogs and cats at pet stores. I have worked in the sales industry for over eight years, so I understand the importance of profitability, but even more so, the value of positive customer relations. Slide please. The pet industry is a booming business. According to the American Pet Products Association, Americans spent $69 billion on their pets in 2017 in every category, including pet food, products, and services, and it also on increase except live animal sales, which they predict to continue to decline. It has been shown that stores can thrive by converting from the outdated and socially unacceptable business model that rely on the sale of mill puppies to a model that focuses on offering quality products and services in addition to hosting adoption events from local shelters and rescues. Slide please. A great example is Petco. Establishments as such participate in successful in-store adoption events. The foundation helps local animal welfare groups facilitate in-store adoption events at Petco locations all over the country virtually every weekend, and helps find homes for more than 400,000 pets per year. Also, ordinances that prohibit the sale of puppies in pet stores may encourage consumers to seek out responsible breeders, as well as adopt from local shelters and rescues. Slide please. It is also important to know that conscientious companies are refusing to do business with pet stores that sell puppies. For instance, Honest Kitchen, a healthy pet food company with products at nearly 5,000 pet stores across the company, or country, excuse me, regularly turns down requests from stores that want to sell their products but also sell puppies. A quote from the owner and founder of the Honest Kitchen is as follows, "As you may know, we've refused to allow puppy mill stores to carry our lines since we first began many moons ago in 2002. Instead, we support pet supply retailers who host pet adoptions at their stores or work with local rescue groups. We also have educated people on how to find a responsible breeder if that need arises." Other advantages of pet store adopting a humane business model include the following: community-focused efforts to address pet overpopulation. The task of housing and euthanizing unwanted animals both largely rely on county and city shelters funded by our local taxpayers. When pet stores partner with local shelters and rescues to hold adoption events, many more homeless animals are adopted. It is only logical to pull dogs and cats from crowded and overburdened county or city shelters instead of allowing more to be shipped in from another state. Bringing puppies from mills only proves to be counterproductive and detrimental. Unfortunately, pet stores are a preferred sales outlet for commercial breeders because they allow the cruelty at the mills to bring to consumers. Abundant documentation shows that Georgia pet stores source puppies from commercial breeders from all over the country. Additionally, in an effort to address pet overpopulation, shelters and rescues can provide an opportunity to educate adopters about the importance of spaying and neutering their animals, which, in addition to other actions, encourages future pet adoption by hopefully creating a positive experience for the adopter. Slide please. Another advantage is consumer protection because to adopt is less expensive because it is not profit-focused, and therefore no financial assistance or lending is needed. Many who engage in impulse purchases at such stores, they fall predatory to lending schemes or unfair business practices. Another way to protect the consumer oftentimes, the dogs or cats are initially cared for in a foster home environment. The shelter or rescue is better able to understand the personality of the dog or cat and can therefore identify and address any concerns before an adoption is made. This allows for transparency and helps to match the right pet with the caller. We simply ask that you please consider a humane pet acquisition ordinance for Cobb County, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
And if you'd also give Millie your name?
Absolutely.
I'm assuming that you're with that young lady who was here before.
Thank you. Good to see you all again.
You bet. Thanks.
The next speaker is Samantha Rowsey. Samantha Rowsey.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman. I'm Samantha Rowsey, and I was born and raised in Cobb County. I'm here today representing friends, family, and neighbors in the South Cobb area, and also as a representative of hundreds of businesses in the West Cobb area that I've worked with as president of the West Cobb Business Association. Last month, I told you that I was distressed at the need to be in front of you regarding this crisis and the lack of action with our public safety crisis. Tonight, I have to tell you that I'm even more distressed now. Another month has gone by in a long line of months where the problem has not been addressed. It just gets shuffled along, and as it gets worse. Do you realize that since the last Board of Commissioners meeting that we had here a month ago, while we've been talking and looking at numbers, we've lost another 11 police officers? Response times are continuing to rise because we don't have enough officers to respond to calls. Risk to the well-being of our officers is also rising. As they answer calls with no backup, they run understaffed with not enough officers to cover all areas of their assigned beats and zones. This leads to stress and fatigue and low morale. They're told, they are told, good things are coming, just hold on. Hold on for what? A 5% increase, which will not even really come out to 5% when you figure in all the factors, when they haven't had a raise in three to five years, that doesn't even keep up with the increase in simple cost of living. Cobb must be competitive to attract and retain quality officers, deputies, and firefighters. I know that you have said that you don't want to get into a nonstop cycle with other agencies, but come on. You have to at least get to the point of competitiveness first before that argument even becomes, starts to become valid. So, here we are kicking the can down the road, one month, two months, three months. When is enough enough? How many more officers is it gonna take leaving before we do something? Will it take the loss of life before we have to act? Just proposing the 2020 budget is not good enough. They need something done now. If a raise does go into effect on October 1st, they will not see a change in pay until next year, and that is not retroactive, and they won't get back pay. In short, I look to each of you tonight, and I ask you, who In short, I look to each of you tonight, and I ask you, who among you is going to be the hero for our heroes? We need a champion. We need someone who will oppose half-measures and put forth a real plan to get these folks the long overdue compensation that they so desperately need right now. Plus, put together a comprehensive plan to address the issue and build a long-term solution so that this issue is fixed, and we do not have to be here again. These heroes fight for us every day. Commissioners, which one of you is going to be that hero that we all need now? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kim Peace Hill.
Good evening. I'm Kim Peace Hill, and I live in Northwest Cobb. I do have an organization called Blue Thanksgiving that I started six years ago. We encourage supportive local law enforcement through various acts throughout the year. The last time I addressed this board, I told you stories of hardships and concerns expressed to me by families of Cobb law enforcement, both sheriff's department and the police department. So I don't believe there's anything we can tell you at this point that you haven't already heard again and again and again. You already know that Cobb public safety is undercompensated, and you know that they're leaving at an alarming rate that continues to grow every week. Last month, the chairman stated that some would like his new budget proposal and others would not, and he was okay with that. I can tell you now that there is not a single person that I have spoke to that is happy about it. It has been taken as an insult, and it's lowered the morale even more so than it already was. Like Samantha said, we've lost another 11 just in the police department. We're not even talking about fire or the sheriff's office right now. This is just the police department. The majority of this county is made up of people who simply want to enjoy their lives. We want to work our jobs, spend time with our families, and pursue our dreams. Most of us that live here are really good people, but there's a group of others, too. Those are the gang members, the drug dealers, the thieves, the crooks, the scammers, the rapists, the violent thugs, and the others who would prey upon these law-abiding citizens. The only thing standing between us and them is that thin blue line that these men and women hold. The officers who apprehend and arrest these criminals, as well as the deputies who keep them behind bars at the jail, are owed a huge debt of gratitude and respect. Deputies in the jail are horribly understaffed. They're understaffed, and they're surrounded by every level of criminal imaginable. They face threats to themselves and their families from these inmates. The very least they deserve is a decent wage and a retirement that will keep them here in Cobb County. So my question to you also is this: Who among you is going to stand up and say, "This is wrong, we've got to fix it"? Who's going to actually take action? Who's going to grab this bull by the horns and say, "Enough is enough, it's time to act"? Talk is cheap. Chairman Boyce said that public safety was a priority, but not the only priority. The fact is, public safety should be the number-one priority, not libraries, not parks, not anything else, because without public safety, we have nothing else. We have nothing else. We are pleading with you to do the right thing. Please, put a real plan in place before we lose any more of our public safety personnel who are committed to keeping our homes and our neighborhoods safe. The voters in Cobb County and beyond are watching you right now, and they're waiting to see what you're going to do. And the votes that we cast at the next election are going to be directly impacted by how you act with this situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Monica Delancey. I live in the Riverside Community in Ostale, Georgia. First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Murphy on his award tonight, well deserved, and also I hope I'm not too early congratulating Michael Register. Thank you to the county for coming to the Riverside Community and hosting the Riverside Apartment Meeting. Thank you to Rob Hosack, our elected officials, District 4 Commissioner Lisa Cupid, and Chairman Mike Boyce, who has been coming there every week, I hear. Thank you very much. And also, I would like to thank support from our nonprofits and our civic organizations who have been standing with us as we address these issues, and that's SCLC, as well as Ostale Community Task Force. And of course, I'm talking about addressing the three apartment complexes that have had those maintenance issues. However, I have been here two years straight, coming to meetings, talking to you about this housing crisis that we have, especially for renters. Renters are paying more than 50% of their income on rent, and I must tell you that no apartment is on Riverside Parkway or low-income apartments. If a person makes $20, $30 an hour, they pay the same as a person making $10 an hour. The rent varies from $700 to $900 a month average for a two-bedroom apartment. Okay? Just like public safety officials are complaining about their salaries, just imagine service employees. That's our warehouse employees, that's our tourist employees that work at the Braves Stadium, and also at Citus Flats Water Park in Citus Flats over Georgia. That's your retail personnel, that's your entry-level workers that work in our schools, and our entry-level workers that work in our hospitals. They're making less than $20,000 a year. When you go to eviction court on Fridays, there's 100 people on the caseload, and they're not there because they're struggling to pay $400 rent. They're there struggling to pay $800 rent, and that's considered supposed to be affordable. But who is that affordable to? Okay? There are a total of 43 schools in Cobb County that are classified as Title I. A Title I school is when majority of the students who are enrolled receive free or reduced lunch, and their household is classified economically disadvantaged. Every one of these districts here in Cobb County have a Title I school in their district. So the writing is on the wall. We must address this housing on all fronts. We must form a task force to say, "If we're going to have low-paying jobs in Cobb County, we need to find out where these people are going to live, because they are here, and we don't want them to be homeless." Also, I just wanted to let you know that on May 9th, moving forward, May 9th, Kingsley Village will host a rental assistance workshop for renters to come out and find out how to navigate resources, because we know that these major issues are going to get fixed, but there's going to be some other issues that arise. We deserve and we demand more in District 4. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is David Birkenbine.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission, County Manager. David Birkenbine, outdoor burning. How y'all doing? Hope you got my emails, got my presentations. We got 13 burn types in Georgia. They're by the state. But the main thing is, this article is intended to promote safeguard out public safety, safety and comfort, and air quality and conditions to citizens on incorporated Cobb County. Medical burn bans, just like if we brought it two years ago when a commissioner asked the question, "What were we banning?". Uh, I don't know. Well, we were banning outdoor burning. Simple. And you gave them 1,000 foot. Simple. They filled out an application to where they go to their doctor, doctor says they don't need to be around outdoor burning. But then, oh, wait, 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 wait. We have, that was just for yard debris. That was for leaves. That was for, so we're going to distinguish between smoke on a critically ill person? I don't, you know, that's where the interpretation comes in. And here, restricted burn. They're not restricted burn areas. They're medical burn bans. If you follow all the guidelines, you're going to have to put the fire out. Oh, but not, you know, again, we don't follow it, do we? Even though the county uses some of the states, what's the ruling law? Codes shall be controlling. So, you know, where does the law of the land come in here? Gives you some definitions, and then outdoor burning and what it does? It puts off toxins. And the state even agrees with it puts off toxins. Then the fire chief can authorize a ban on outdoor burning? Well, that's prohibitions. I mean, I, you know, you can, you could even fine them. When you get to 54113, include violation any total, and, well, when you go to 54113, they have stuff listed, you know, furnaces and all this good stuff, but residential fireplace, attached dwellings, you know, chimneys, fire pits, fire bowls, all this stuff. Well, that overrules everything. No, it doesn't. It doesn't overrule it. You have a law here. When you go to the one right here, if the people call and the smoke is affecting them, who are you to say, "It's not"? And yet, you'll come out, and I've been through it, they'll come out, hundreds of times, hundreds of times, hundreds of, you know, going on four years now, over four years, and we just keep, we just keep kicking this can down the road. It was a good law, all the way back to 2007, until somebody said, "Oh, they're trying to take away my burning rights." You don't have a right to burn. Once you light that match, you ought to be responsible for that smoke that goes out from your property to another property. You shouldn't be responsible when you light that match. When you want to burn, to be responsible for somebody that has a health problem, don't be so insconsiderate. I sent you plenty of emails, and, you know, I don't expect an answer. I don't want an answer. I just want the law enforced, and I think it should be. All these people out here, they want to enforce it. I'm sure they do. If there was enough of them, once the, once the police have, you know, don't come out, then you ain't got the fire department. So give them a raise, so they'll come put out the fire for me.
I'm Brian Reed. I retired from the fire department this past July. At the March 26th Board of Commissioners meeting, there was a lot of emotion. There were a lot of facts and figures thrown around, arguments why you guys as the Board of Commissioners should take better care of the firefighters. And it was communicated that you didn't care about the firefighters, and you guys took some offense to that, which is understandable, and it elicited some defensiveness. And tonight, I don't want to cite facts and figures and whatnot. What I want to try to do is get to your heart and try to help you have a greater appreciation for your firefighters, and help you understand why the reality is, is they are pretty well convinced that you really are kind of indifferent to their plight. In the late 1990s, there was a new pension plan that was offered, and it was a pension plan that Human Resources said that, well, it was implied if we didn't get into it, we'd be crazy. We didn't have to, but you'd be insane not to get into this. And we were told, we were assured, you'll never pay any more than 4% into this. I think they're paying 7% into it now, and I think the goal is 10%. And public safety never pushed back, we just ate it. And for the kids hiring in today, there's really no incentive to come on, and there's no incentive to stay from a pension standpoint. In 2012, we had a serious shortage in our budget, and the commission could have increased the Millie rate, and John Q. Public would have had to pay a little bit more in taxes that year to keep the services up. In my opinion, that would have been the right thing to do, but the burden for the services were put on the people providing the services. Instead, the county employees had that burden put on them, so except for the library system, we had the burden put on us. And the burden was placed on the very people providing the service, not the people receiving the benefits of it. My family was out $1,200 that year instead of a few, a few dollars, and were never reimbursed, never repaid in any way annually or anything else. Last year, we had a firefighter that was on duty that died. She collapsed right in the station. Following her physical abilities test, she went back to duty, and she ran a wreck and had a full arrest, ran a full arrest and collapsed right in the firehouse. Once you try to imagine that, if one of your coworkers died and you had to be responsible for trying to bring him back to life. It was a kick in the gut to every firefighter in the fire department. And Ms. Morell, I think you posted something on your Facebook page, and if I'm mistaken, I apologize, but I don't remember anything else really even being brought up about it. And it was a big deal to us, huge deal. Last year, excuse me, what I want to do is communicate to you how your firefighters responded to the way they've been treated. When a plumber or carpenter doesn't have enough people to accomplish a task, they just wait until they get enough people. But your firefighters don't do that. For instance, the textbooks recommend three firefighters to raise a 35-foot ladder. But because they don't always have the staffing, your firefighters learn ways to carry and raise a 170-foot ladder by themselves with 60 pounds of gear on. They risk their back injuries, they risk tearing their shoulders up, because they love the job, and they know it's crucial to be able to place a ladder to a third-floor balcony at 3:00 in the morning with 60 pounds of gear on when a woman's threatening to throw her three-year-old off the balcony because fire's licking at their butt. And we had snowpocalypse a few years ago. My shift caught the brunt of it. A few weeks later, we had another winter storm that was predicted, and all across the county, firefighters left their families at home, and they came into their respective stations the night before. And the thought of compensation never even entered their mind, because they weren't doing it for that.
Sir, your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commission Chair and Commissioners. I'm back again. Last time, I told you a tale of two firefighters. Talked about that retired firefighter that left and had some good things, could live on the retirement and look at a productive retirement. And I talked about the firefighter that replaced that retiree, that when one hung the helmet up, the other one put it on. And they don't have much of a future to look to far as retirement, the ability to have healthcare benefits when they do retire, because it's not in the plan anymore. So I did have that, and they didn't. Statistically, firefighters, police officers, EMS workers, dispatchers, we run at a high level of stress all the time. We're a lot like that duck on the pond. We're cruising across the pond, and by the appearance of the people around, we're just calmly gliding on the pond. But underneath, we're paddling furiously. Most young firefighters, police officers, don't realize the damage that death stress is doing to them with all that crazy paddling. See, just last week, Engine Number Nine got rear-ended. It went up in flames from that impact. There was a police officer that was at the rear of Engine Nine, and fortunately was not impacted at 4:00 in the morning, and ran and pulled the victim from the burning car, one of the most toxic fires that we can be around, and that officer did it with no protection, and drugged that victim 50 feet down the road, attempting to save them from that burning car. What we can't tell that officer is what risk he took to his health and what those outcomes are going to be when he does, if he gets to retirement, because of the risk he takes every day on the job. See, we know that on the job, we know those risks. But what we don't ever appreciate is what they do to us at the end when our retirement gets shortened. And then when we shorten the And then when we shorten the funding for that, to where they can't even find reasonable healthcare for themselves when they retire, because it's not afforded them any longer by the county, that's a big deal. What about the firefighters that were working the wreck in front of the engine? What did they do? They ran back, and they worked that victim in the street. And they couldn't get their SCBAs, self-contained breathing apparatus, and breathe fresh air, because they were on fire and exploding and being launched like missiles out of their burning fire engine. So they were in the smoke. They could smell it, and if you can smell it, it's in your body. And see, that's cancer risk. That's cardiovascular, that's respiratory, things like chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, asthma, things that they will develop as they get older, because their exposure's on the job. Just some interesting numbers. Firefighters have a nine percent higher risk of being diagnosed with cancer than anybody else in the U.S. population. Fourteen percent higher risk of dying of cancer than anybody else in the U.S. fire population. They have a hundred and ninety percent increased risk of dying of mesothelioma, sixty-two percent risk of esophageal cancer death, fifty percent or greater risk of testicular cancer. Now, I can't tell you about the ovarian cancers that our female fighters, fighters that are in the audience, may have, because this is an IOH, National Institute of Safety and Health Study, that was only conducted in Philadelphia, Los Angeles, and Chicago. Seven hundred male firefighters. Not a big population of females in the fire service across the country, but it's growing. So what's it going to do to them? We don't know yet, because we don't have enough clinical data to put that out there. Multiple myelomas, non-Hodgins lymphoma, holistic cancers continue to go on, that we are all at over a fifty percent increased risk of the general population. And when's it going to strike us? Well, now it is the leading cause of firefighter-on-duty death.
Thank you, sir. That's your time.
Thank you.
Those were your first eight speakers.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to have, go ahead and scroll the consent items, and then Commissioner Cupid, I believe you had a comment on one of them?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to see if Jason Gaines from Community Development is here. I asked him if he can help draw attention to item number fifteen. I think he's approaching. I have interest in keeping this item on the agenda. This item is to award a business at five-seven-zero-one Mabelton Parkway funds through our Community Development Block Grant Program for facade improvement. And this has been something we've been working on for years and was put in place in January of two thousand and eighteen. And this is our first successful applicant of getting funding. So I just asked Jason if you can let the public know about this program and how they can apply.
All right. Good evening again, Commissioners. Our facade grant improvement program is administered by the Economic Development Division and Community Development. It's focused on low-income census tracts and other distressed or belighted areas that meet the definition as laid out in the policy. And I've got some specific language from the policy that kind of talks about the parameters of the program. First of all, the funds for the program come from, from the Community Development Block Grant allocation. And initially, it started out with seventy-five thousand dollars available to eligible properties to apply for. The funds can be used to cover the cost of any project permit fees, if applicable, upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy or a letter of completion. Applicants must provide a match equal to or greater than five percent of the amount awarded through this program. The match must be spent on the facade improvement project. Program funding is provided in the form of a loan with zero interest that is forgiven at a rate of twenty percent each year over a five-year period with no payments required, provided the property owner continues, or the property continues to be maintained in accordance with the program requirements, such as retention of ownership, occupancy by tenant, maintenance of the facade, insurance, and payment of all property taxes due. So in other words, it's a grant. In cases where the applicant is a tenant, they must obtain approval from the property owner as a co-applicant. If the property becomes ineligible, the amount of the loan must be repaid at a prorated amount. Again, this program is administered by the Economic Development Division of Community Development, and we are available to speak to any interested parties about the program and, and get them squared away to apply.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate that. And thank you, Chairman, for indulging that, so we can get the word out about the program.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Jason. Commissioner Rott, yes?
I just want to make a comment about number twenty. There's been some questions sent to the office about the, this agenda item, which deals with giving approval to the Finance Director or the Comptroller to proceed with the appropriate actions for the issuance of the tax anticipation notes. This is not the final agenda item. This is not actually issuing the notes. This is simply giving the Finance Director approval to start moving forward with the process. There was some concern by folks that it was on the consent agenda. The actual agenda item that would issue the TANs or authorize issuance of the TANs has always been on the regular agenda and would be on the regular agenda when it comes forward. So I just want to make sure everybody understood that this was simply giving the Finance Director the approval to start moving forward.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up, Commissioner Rott. I appreciate that. Commissioner Burrell? Yeah, we move those to regular. We'll do those after the DOT, part of the regular agenda tonight. Okay, with that, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised. Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Okay. Mr. County Manager, I believe you have a recommendation here?
Thank you. Good evening, Miss Chairman and Board Members. I would like to ask Randy Kreider and some of the command staff from both the police and fireside, as well as Chief Deputy Beck, to come forward, please, and join me as we make a recommendation to the board. This particular agenda item is a recommendation for the board to consider appointing a new Public Safety Director to replace Sam Houghton, who retired March twenty-ninth of this year. And it's my pleasure this evening, Mr. Chairman, to recommend the appointment of Chief Mike Register as our new Public Safety Director. Chief Register probably needs no introduction, has had a long history serving his country in the military, as well as serving in various public safety and police capacities in the metro Atlanta, as well as, excuse me, overseas in his, in his military role. Mike was recommended by a committee that did a thorough vetting of the applicants. And I also believe that was among the finalists that had a chance to interview with the Board of Commissioners. Before I asked the, the board to take action on the formal recommendation, I also wanted to extend my thanks to Randy Kreider. Chief Kreider did a very good job as the acting and interim Public Safety Director while we were making the search for ultimately Chief Register. So, thank you, Randy. With that said, Miss Chairman, we'd like to recommend that the board appoint Mike Register as the Public Safety Director.
So I move to approve the appointment of Mike Register as the Public, as the Public Safety Director for Cobb County. Yeah, discussion? Commissioner Rott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, you and I have talked about this before. I cannot support filling this position. It's not about the person. As I said, when I did not support the federal lobbyist, that was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I think this, the, the money associated with this position needs to go towards the rank-and-file fire and police to improve their pay. I think that in the past, this position has not been filled, or the chiefs of the fire, police, and everyone else has reported to the county manager. It's not about the, the person. The chief has done a phenomenal job in, in getting the fire, the police firemen to reach out to the community. Nothing but positive comments and responses coming back, especially with the community police force that he's put in place. I just can't support filling this position.
Okay, appreciate your comments. Commissioner Burrell?
I would just like to say that I a hundred percent support Chief Register for Public Safety Director and look forward to the future.
Likewise, I'm in complete support of Chief Register obtaining this position. Chief Register, you've done an excellent job in working with the community, in working with your department, and working with Commissioners, and working with staff. And while it's clear that you are well-qualified professionally in, in the nature of, of police work, you just demonstrate that you are beyond just a manager, you have been a leader for this organization. And I want to publicly recognize that and to let you know that I, as well as many others, have great confidence in your ability to help lead the, all of the organizations that fall within public safety. I think the role is valuable, especially considering the dialogue that we're having here today and public comment, to have someone who leads public safety and to not see those roles diluted in having all of them report to our county manager. I think it's very important for us, for us to have a strong leader in public safety to make sure that we are advocating for what the needs are in public safety and can be a strong voice in advocating that through the Commissioners. So please know that I join Commissioner Burrell and hopefully other Commissioners in supporting you in your new role today. Thank you.
And I agree, just a lot of comments. I think one of the concerns that I had was to him, actually, is that it's really tough to ask Chief Register to leave his position. He's done such a great job there. And, but I also understand that he brings certain skills to this job. And, and I appreciate what Commissioner Rott said, I really do. I just think the concern I had was is that we have four departments that work under public safety. And Chief, Chief Houghton did a great job of being a common voice, coordinating their efforts to start the recovery to the public safety resources that we need to address this problem. And as you can see tonight, we're not there yet, but I think that under his leadership, we're a lot farther down the road, because he could work with not just our public safety departments here, but also with the sheriff and the courts. And he brings that common, that common voice, that coordinated voice that's so essential to a community of this size. So I know the Chief Register will do the same thing, and I know the board looks forward to working with him. And we're excited about the future he'll bring to this county. So that, I'll call a question. And it passes four to one with Commissioner Rott in opposition.
Well, first, let me say I really am honored to be named for this position. And I pledge to each and every Commissioner that I'll not only work with you to make your district better, but to make Cobb County as a whole better. And let me say to all the men and women that work under the public safety umbrella that you're my number-one priority. I have the utmost respect for each and every one of you. And you are to be thanked and appreciated on a daily basis for the selfless service that you give your community. And I will work to, as a part of your team, to make not only public safety a better place to work, but also to improve the Cobb County public safety apparatus, so we can better serve our community. And again, I want to say thank you to the community and also let you know that since becoming Chief of Police, I have been committed to the community, as I have been committed to the men and women who worked at the Cobb County Police Department. And I think that we have done a great job in strengthening a partnership that is very much needed in today's world. And as Public Safety Director, I can promise you that not only will we maintain that bond, but my hope and my prayer is that we make it stronger. And for all my friends and, and the community stakeholders, there's too many to identify. I don't want to leave anyone out. I really appreciate you coming here tonight and sharing in this moment with me. And I do echo what the county manager said about Chief Kreider. Thank you very much for your leadership as interim director. And, you know, you see Public Safety's command staff up here, and each and every one of them, I tell you, could do this job that I have been named to do. And I look forward to not only working with them and learning from them, but I want to say to my three deputy chiefs, Tim Cox, Jeff Adcock, and Stuart Manhooser. Man, I love all three of you. And we have made such a great team. And I don't know if you've ever learned anything from me, but I have learned an awful lot from you three, and I applaud you for that. And my wife, who is my best friend and the love of my life, thank you for being here to share in this moment. Last but not least, and I hate, you know, to say it, but Chief Beck? Well, I got to. Thank you for the partnership that you've given me at the Police Department and the bond that we have between the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department. Thank you very much.
Okay, on to DOT.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. DOT has nine items for consideration this afternoon. And the first item will be the request for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with CMEC LLC in an amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars for Chimney Springs Drive sidewalks.
Commissioner Rott?
I want you to approve.
The second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our second item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a supplemental agreement, number one, to project number X twenty-three oh one, TO number two, to the twenty-sixteen Master Task Order Contract with Pond &amp; Company, in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars for additional engineering and design services for intersection improvements on Acworth-Dewest Road at Jim Owens Road, Mars Hill Church Road.
Commissioner Gamble?
So moved.
Second? Second? Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. The third item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve project number X twenty-one twenty-three to the twenty-eighteen countywide unit price contract with Detection Engineering Technology, Inc. in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars for installation of two additional overhyped vehicle notification devices for Concord Road Covered Bridge.
Commissioner Cupid?
It is with the holiest of prayers. And we are praying that this fix will keep people from hitting the covered bridge.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm putting my faith at this dais. At least, Lord, let us drop by fifty percent. Ideally, to a hundred.
Well, you're going to drop by fifty percent, because they're going to hit this.
They'll probably be four seconds on this one. Matter of fact, John Gargers, would you like to second this?
With, with that, I move that we approve item number twenty-nine.
Here's a second. Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners determine the circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA thirty-two dash three dash four, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on six parcels on Warden Combs Road Sidewalk. on six parcels on Ward &amp; Combs Road sidewalks, and adopt the resolutions and orders in forms substantially similar to those attached and as approved by the county attorney's office, and further authorize the chairman to execute those necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Have a second. Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of stream and wetland mitigation credits for Whooping Creek Meadows LLC in an amount not to exceed $36,800 for stream and wetland impacts associated with New Macklin Road project.
So moved.
Have a second. Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Okay. The next item, I do want to mention that there was a small typo in that one.
Right.
So we'll make sure that that gets corrected, sir. But it is to request that the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of wetland mitigation credits for Whooping Creek Meadows LLC in an amount not to exceed $64,000 for wetland impacts associated with John Ward Road sidewalks, and further authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of takings under OCGA 32-3-4 and authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Paces Ferry Road, New Paces Ferry Road, Paces Mill Road, Twin Lakes Drive, and adopt a resolution and order in an order and form substantially similar to that attached and is approved by the county attorney's office, and further authorize the chairman to proceed or execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rott. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a reimbursable contract for acquisition of right-of-way with the Georgia Department of Transportation for Kennesaw Mountain pedestrian improvements, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents to include necessary quick claim days to Georgia DOT for right-of-way certifications.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
And our last item is to request that the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement for professional services from Accelera Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $22,450 for pedestrian improvements on Holt Road near Wheeler High School, and further authorize the corresponding budget transaction.
Commissioner Rott. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Call the question. Hey, this passes five to zero. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now we added two more to regular. This was public safety. Fire, right, yeah. Are you going to do it, Jason, buddy? Okay.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Finance has two items today, and we're here with Chief Kreider as well. Both discuss financing of certain equipment purchases or stations within the fire fund. The first of which is adopt a resolution authorizing the Finance Director/Controller to proceed with the appropriate actions in order to enter into a lease purchase financing agreement for six fire engines and one heavy fire rescue truck. And let me just do a little housekeeping, first of all. First, I want to mention that, again, this is to proceed with the appropriate steps in order to begin financing. This is not the final item. We will be coming forward with additional approval resolutions in the next month or so that will dictate all the terms of financing where the board will again get to vote on these lease purchase options. With that, I'd like to highlight the main idea of doing so. Right now, traditionally, we've been purchasing capital items in the fire fund or equipment through one-time purchases, so large expenditures in one year. This will allow us to level out these costs for five years or 10 years, depending on which item we're discussing. So the idea, again, is to level out those cash flows. The purpose and the benefit of doing so is the opportunity cost of not spending those funds all at once. We're able to put those funds to use in the fire fund for additional purposes. We're able to speed up some other capital purchases. In addition, those funds that we do not deploy, we can invest in our own coffers. So again, those are the advantages of pursuing such financing options. Chief Kreider, anything you'd like to add? Okay, so with that, this is quite the recommendation. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the Finance Director/Controller to proceed with the appropriate actions in order to enter into the lease purchase financing to acquire certain fire equipment, including six fire engines and one heavy rescue truck, in a principal amount not to exceed $5.5 million for a not-to-exceed-five-year term, as outlined herein with the assistance of the county's financial advisor and bond counsel, including without limitation as follows: to prepare the request for proposals and other appropriate documents for the fire equipment lease purchase, to conduct a competitive bid process for the fire equipment lease purchase, to award the fire equipment lease purchase to the responsive bidder offering the lowest true interest cost to the county, to take all other appropriate actions in connection with the fire equipment lease purchase financing, and authorize the chairman, the county manager, and the Finance Director/Controller, as customary, to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the county.
So moved. Any discussion? Commissioner Rott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, buddy. I have concerns about this, especially in the discussion. I understand that the fund has the money to purchase the vehicles today, and that if they're needed, then they should be purchased. My concern is that the money's going to be used, almost double-dipping, it's going to be used stretched out for fire equipment and then possibly for other uses. If the money needs to be used for razor for the firefighters, then it needs to be used for that, and the vehicles need to wait. But I have concerns about kind of double allocating the money potentially. And I just see the beginnings of something similar to what's happened with the water transfer, so I can't support it.
Okay. Other comments? I'd just like to say, I think... This is the response to what we're hearing here in the audience. We have, I mean, at least my proposal is, is that I don't raise the mileage rate this summer, and we'll get some additional revenue from the tax digest that'll help us eventually reach some compensation level this summer. And this is one way of bringing additional resources into that compensation discussion while not having to raise the mileage rate. Because, you know, as important as this issue is, we always have to look at the whole body politic about how we think the people, the public's going to respond to raising your taxes. So this is one creative way of trying to address your situation and to address it this year. And I think it was a very novel approach that we don't, doesn't require us to, you know, to go out and do anything that might have to create a wider discussion, which might jeopardize the potential for us to increase the compensation for you this summer. So while I appreciate the Commissioner's comments, I do think that we have to be very careful that this doesn't turn into a water fund transfer. But I do appreciate the staff working, particularly Chief Kreider, working to find ways that we can increase compensation potentially this year and not have to wait down the road, while also bringing the necessary equipment to do our job. Because this is, the firefighters, it's not a agency where you can just show up with hoses, you got to show up with equipment, too. So with that...
And it's coming from the fire fund, it's not impacting the general...
That's correct. It's coming from the fire fund. Okay, with that, I'll call a question. Passes four to one with Commissioner Rott in opposition.
The second item for your consideration tonight, sir, is recommending that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution declaring the county's official intent to finance on a tax-exempt basis the cost of constructing and equipping for government use, a new fire station 17, to be located at 3321 Ernest W. Barrett Parkway Northwest, Ernest W. Barrett Parkway Northwest, my apologies, in unincorporated Cobb County on land previously acquired by the county, capitalize interest during the construction period, cost of issuance, and other permitted costs and expenses related thereto, in the not-to-exceed principal amount of $6.5 million, and for a not-to-exceed term of 10 years, and authorizing the Finance Director/Controller to proceed with the appropriate actions for the fire station financing as outlined herein with the assistance of the county's financial advisor and bond counsel, including without limitation as follows: to undertake a financial and legal analysis of appropriate financing structural alternatives to prepare appropriate documents for the fire station financing, expected to include without limitation a parameter approval resolution to be presented to the Board of Commissioners for approval and adoption, together with the requisite, the request for proposal, and other applicable financing documents, to undertake a competitive bid process and other appropriate actions in connection with the fire station financing, and authorize the chairman, the county manager, and the Finance Director/Controller, as customary, to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the county.
So moved. Comments? Call the question. Passes four to one, Commissioner Rott in opposition.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, buddy. And with that, let's take a short break till eight forty-five. Okay. We're back. You ready, Brad? Okay, great. All right, so I believe we have eight more speakers. Rod, would you like, Rod, would you like to take over the speaker list?
The first speaker in the second session, Mr. Chairman, is Xavier Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Xavier Wilson. I work with Fulton County Schools Police, but I formerly worked with Cobb County Police Department for about three years. Currently a resident of Cobb County, I live in Kennesaw. Currently a resident of Cobb County, I live in Kennesaw. One of my former coworkers wanted me to speak about why I decided to leave the department. I left March of last year, I'm sorry, March of this year. I decided to leave because I saw that I was not going to be able to retire and have a livable wage. At first I thought I would stay and stick it out, but I soon realized that things would not change. That when the problem was presented, no one seemed to care. I know someone earlier spoke about you guys saying that you were offended that people said that you didn't care about public safety, but I know from my perspective and a lot of other officers that they, that's how they feel, because we're not being made a priority. That it seems that a problem that can be fixed very simply, the solution, the solution to the problem is not being made. I decided to leave because the retirement, the 30% pension that is being offered to us now is just simply not enough. I was contributing in about 6%, I'm sorry, about 7% of my pay into this retirement, whereas now I'm contributing 6% into a retirement and getting double the pension that I'm receiving here at Cobb. I do not believe that anybody could live off of that. I don't believe that you guys believe that. And it's some, that everybody, it's something that needs to be changed immediately. I could not, would no longer sit back and wait for the change to be made, I had to make it in myself. The police department, Cobb Police Department is a really good department, but I believe it's being crippled by you guys not seeing the problem, or not wanting to fix the problem. And that goes for the fire department and the sheriff's office as well. It used to be that Cobb was the best agency in the metro Atlanta area, and it still is. But you're losing guys, because nobody wants to work and then retire and not, and be making minimum wage. That's not something that people can live off of. I just felt that it was important for me to come and speak on behalf of some of my former coworkers, because those are still guys that I care about. Even the fire department and the sheriff's office guys that I had a chance to work with while I was working with Cobb. It is important that you guys understand that people are gonna continue to leave. It's not gonna stop until something is done. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Brady.
Good evening, my name is John Brady, I live in North Cobb County, have since 1978. I've worked for Cobb County Fire Department for 35 years, when I retired in 2017. The same year I became the president of International Association of Firefighters, Local 2563, here in Cobb County. My father retired from the fire department in 1994, and my brother retired from SO last year, from the sheriff's office. At the, with all that being said, I know a little bit about public safety in Cobb County. My family to total has a little over 100 years of public safety experience in Cobb County. I speak with members of the fire department on a daily basis, as well as members of the sheriff's office and the police departments, with great regularity, and most of them know of my union affiliation, and they speak very candidly to me. And I can tell you, the newer members say that they're just waiting for a better opportunity, whether it be from Cobb or another agency, or even the private sector. They've seen this thing being kicked down the road, time and time again. Under the current benefits plan, they're not, they're now under, they're looking just for better opportunities and, under the current benefit, for an employee less than 10 years, there's no benefit to stay in, since they have minimal salary increases in the last 10 years. We were furloughed once, I think we got salary increases three times over 10 years. Benefit costs continue to rise, whether or not we get raises, with no real plans to increase it by the leaders of the county. All this is happening while the C-Saround government's rewarding their employees' loyalties for staying with them, and Cobb County offers minimal compensation, if and any at all. During your closing statements at the last commission meeting, you said that employees should trust in their commissioners. I grew up in Reagan years, and I follow the Reagan logic of trust but verify. With the tax digest in Cobb County growing, it would seem that all departments within the government like to explain this, and much has been made of living up to your commitment to the Atlanta Braves. I think it's time we live up to commitment of the sworn employees. The fire service is very physically demanding job, along with the police and SO. We all have cardiac issues from our career. A recent focus been on the high risk of cancer being prevalent within the fire service is major risk. I've been recently been scanned, and have been found to be clean of any cancer. But I will forever, the rest of my life, just as all county employees in the fire department will look over my shoulder for that risk of cancer to creep up on me. Under the new benefit plans, current employees will not be eligible for health benefits in retirement, and that should be a reason right there for them to look like the previous speaker for another agency. These employees are choosing to risk their life, day in and day out, for the citizens of Cobb County, and they should be protected both in their job and in retirement for their efforts. All the current public safety employees have only seen minimal salary increases while the benefits continue to grow. And to offer public safety employees 5%, which if you know how the payroll works within the market control point, for a senior employee, that may only equate to 2.5% if any at all. After years without raises and being furloughed, this officer is a shame, in my opinion. In closing, I'd ask the commissioners to take the following steps. Give sworn personnel and fire police and sheriff's office a raise that will encourage retention and new hires. Implement a step and grade plan, which the IFF local here has one that we can present. We're right now working with our leadership in the fire department on that. And implement a rule of 80 defined benefits plan for sworn public safety personnel to bring employees back to Cobb County. I believe these steps will help retain and attract firefighters, as well as police officers and sheriff deputies, and make Cobb County the desirable place to work in metro Atlanta that it once was. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Lindsay O'Shields.
Good evening. My name's Lindsay O'Shields, wife of Cobb County Fire Captain James O'Shields. He's at Station 1 in Mabelton. I live down the street, so I am Marietta 51's first in. My main pragmatic bafflement is the resistance to giving public safety more. Is this, the looming potential for loss of excellence we face by losing personnel who rightly decide, desire parity of pay and benefits with other comparable departments. We have a really outstanding training department, it's enviable, it's envied. It's kinda stolen from. We train these guys up, it's $90,000, firefighters are not cheap. And that's just for a little seedling firefighter. They train every time they go into the fire station. And they are trained by a very, very good training department. They have hands-on fire training, they have computer-based fire training that other people don't have. We have Rolls Royces here. And you are letting other departments take your Rolls Royce away, by not maintaining it. It's cheap to do an oil change, maybe a Rolls Royce oil change, but it's cheaper, as opposed to purchasing a new one. We are hemorrhaging people, and these are really, really good people. And I don't mean just good, they are good, I know them, they're wonderful people. I mean expensive people. You've got a bunch of doctors and lawyers of the blue collar industry right here. And you paid for them already, and you, it does not make fiscal sense to let them go, in my opinion. And by not taking care of them, they have to go, or their wheels are gonna fall off. They're just making good sense. While I'm in agreement with the more heartrending facts that have been presented to you, the everyday danger, carcinogens, the heart stress of popping up to run emergencies every night, hearing loss, that's a thing, I can tell you, I'm a wife to one. Destroyed knees and backs, that's a thing, I can tell you, I know them. Obvious threat to life and limb, that one is, one everyone can pay attention to, we all know those things. But to lose our people is to throw away money. The people's money, Cobb Countyans' money, our little tax money. We as Cobb County citizens, we benefit from higher ISO ratings. Those result from well-funded fire department. This draws industry and development. If you have a good ISO rating, because you have a good fire department, a well-run fire department, well-run because you have good people running it, then you have lower insurance rates. That brings industry. You have lower incidence of catastrophic whatever, that brings industry. They can trust that their stuff is gonna get taken care of. We as citizens benefit from a strong fire and police and sheriff's department, because safety is a draw. It brings people in, they want to live here, they're, they feel comfortable moving here. And developing. Public safety is not a place to cut money. If Cobb County were a house, these would be load-bearing walls. This is not drywall, this is not paint. It was said last month that the citizens have not cried out for this. I would say that they have also not cried out for oxygen. Public safety is a comparable thing, in that once people feel the lack, it will be a nightmare to try and turn this problem around. Thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker is Stephen Gainer.
Thank you Commissioners, Chairman, County Manager. My name is Stephen Gainer, I'm the president of Fraternal Order Police, Cobb County Lodge 13, located 2350 Ostell Road in Marietta. I represent over 760 members of my lodge, most of which are members of Cobb County Public Safety. I'd like to recognize the fine decision you made to make Chief Register now Director-Register. That was an awesome decision, I think it'll do great for our department. And I'd like to recognize that the $168,000 that was saved, or would have been saved if you didn't create the position or hire, wouldn't have really helped us in public safety, although I appreciate Chairman Ott's, or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ott's, sorry sir, opinion, I don't think that money would have done us very well at this point, but... Let me recognize the crowd of supporters we had again this, this meeting, to show you all that we are still concerned, I think you know that, we've hammered on the issues over and over again. But I want to tell you, that they've told you already that we were missing 11, well, two more quit today, so a total of, in 28 days, 13 Cobb County Police Officers have left the department. 13 in the 28 days since our last meeting. That tells you that you need to address the problem now, to stop this outward flow. We graduated eight last Thursday, some of you attended the graduation. Eight, but we lost 13. We can't keep this up. The citizens of Cobb County are beginning to suffer. If you're not aware of it already, we've had domestic violence issues in Commissioner Cupid's district, where the citizen had to wait several hours, two or three hours, no officer showed up. They went home, they came back the next day. They got an officer to come out to take the report, only to have that officer leave the scene again, because it was an accident with injuries, and they had to wait again for that response. We've had auto accidents in District 3, where they've sat on 285, 75, waiting two and three hours for the officer to get there, because there was no injuries. We've had a mental health standoff in District 4 again, where we had four officers, we only had six officers out of the eight that are assigned to that precinct during that shift. We only had six. Four were tied up on that mental health issue. That meant that two had to cover the entire beat while they dealt with this mental health armed individual, and they had to call an on-duty, or an on-call detective to come in and help them with the search warrant and the arrest warrant, because nobody could leave to go get that from the court. Those issues are becoming more and more prevalent each day. You need to act now to address this problem. And I gotta add to it that 911 is presently down 21 positions, although 12 of those are newly added positions, they are in the same situation that the rest of public safety is, and they often get overlooked, but they are a critical part of our operation. Without the 911 center, we don't know where to go, and we don't know what to, what we need to address. So I'd ask you at this point, to reach out, figure out what we can do right now. Chairman, the proposal you made just was not acceptable, it was not gonna bring us up to where we needed to be. I ask you to consider a possible 10% raise, at this point, to bring public safety up to a position that's comparable to others, but also set in place a plan that will take us into the future. Again, I mentioned this last time, made an awesome plan for transportation into the future, but nothing for public safety. We need a plan set in place, so the members know that given the next years to come, we're not just gonna have a one-time deal, we're gonna have something coming each year to make us better and better, and we won't be in this boat again. We need your support, we need you to come together as a team, we need you to take action now. Not in 2020, but now. Take a step now, take a step in 2020, bring us to the pay step and grade process that Commissioner Ott has talked about in the past. We need that now, and I urge you to sit down as a group and come up with that. I look forward to your comments at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
The next speaker is Michael Hubner.
Thank you Cobb County Commissioners, for letting me speak to you tonight. My name is Mike Hubner, and I'm a Cobb County resident. I'm here because a firefighter named Jason Anderson saved my life around 6 o'clock on January 29th of this year. I was hiking along the hooch that day, right below Johnson Ferry Bridge, was checking on my favorite fishing spot, and I fell in. For the next 40 minutes, I struggled to simply keep my head up. The water was so high and so fast, it felt invincible. Two, two to three times the height of a normal fishing day, a flood. I tried to swim, but I couldn't, I tried to bounce off the bottom, there was none. I kicked my feet up like in a recliner, but my boots were too heavy. And I bounced off one outstretched branch after another, and I was running out of time. It was becoming dark and the water was merging with the land and the sky. I was hanging onto my last branch, and I knew it, because my jeans were ripped to my ankles and snagged on the riverbed. I could not float away, I thought I was going to die. And then with my head resting on the branch and water rushing by and spilling in my mouth and lungs, I heard it yell. It was if I woke up from a nightmare, and I managed to yell a pathetic, "Help me!" It was futile though. Louder. "Help me!" I yelled with the force of someone facing death, and in an instant, an instant, I heard a kind woman's voice. "Are you in the water?" "Yes, I'm in the water! Hang on, I'm calling the police and fire department right now, they will be there in a minute." "I will," I thought, "I will hang on for a minute." And I had hope. I've told the water rescue unit from Sandy Springs Street was in the water within nine minutes of receiving the call dispatch. I got to meet Jason Anderson in person and discuss what things looked like from his point of view, and it was not good, not good at all. Multiple jurisdictions were responding to this, because of the incredible complexity of the operation. I was drowning in a river, and nobody knew exactly where I was or who I was. Jurisdictionally, I was in the hooch, which cut through Cobb and Sandy Springs, so units were dispatched on both sides of an approximate location, Soap Creek. It was a water rescue, but a fast water rescue, when making it difficult to figure out how to get out, get out to me. The water was freezing cold, and so was the air, and it was night. Jason was probably the first person to spot me, and with limited options, he made a snap decision to use the inflatable boat and let a two-man team across. They paddled across and ended up 30 to 50 yards downstream, and they ran those yards through tangle, brush, and brambles to get to my location. I asked him when we met, when we met months later, how bad a shape was I in? He said my arms had dropped into the water, and he estimated that I had one minute to live. live, so he jumped in. Grab, grabbed me and backed me up. Sorry. And backed me out of the tangled jeans, which somehow released by opposite force. He pushed me onto the branch, pulled me over, and dragged me to a small dock. At that time, I was slipping in and out of consciousness. I was confused, I couldn't really walk, even assisted. I had no ID since the wall was in my jeans, and my core temperature was 84 degrees. Reflecting back on the enormity of the operation that saved my life, I am truly humbled and infinitely grateful to all those who participated. But I am also utterly convinced that the real miracle here is not that I was saved, but that so many people could somehow be so exceptionally trained, equipped, experienced in what they do, that they could somehow convert a single 911 call about a guy in a river somewhere to risking at least two lives to save me with the margin of error of a minute. One wrong call, one wrong turn, one dead guy in the water, and one sad day for everyone. My only hope for sharing this story is that, is that my city counts, my county, my county board energizes and reinvigorates its cooperative relationship with the Cobb Fire and PD leadership to ensure that these exceptional men and women, who truly do serve and protect our beloved community, can work together to develop a suitable financial model to ensure we continue to attract high-quality candidates to new positions while keeping the older guys around to show them the ropes. Thank you, thank you.
The next speaker is Dennis O'Rourke.
Good evening. My name's Dennis O'Rourke. I live in Kennesaw. That is impossible for me to follow, except to say that on two separate occasions, these same men and women, not these men and women, but firemen and policemen saved my life on two separate occasions. I would not be here as well. So let's talk about what they do. And I'm an advocate because I have a right to be here and speak on their behalf. These people are remarkable. Okay? They run into danger when the rest of us are running in the other direction. We don't even contemplate what that takes. I understand that some people on the border were in the military, so you probably understand what it means to do things for people that you're not related to and have real, no contact or, or relationship with, and treat them like they were family. That's what these people do every day. Okay? And what do we do? We disrespect them. Okay? We don't pay them a living wage. Okay? I had a business. My employees got paid what they were worth. They earned what I paid them, and I respected them. Most of the people here, you can go around the room, they didn't choose this career because they intended to get rich, far from it. There's a higher calling for any first responder. I've heard the sentiment on the board is that the voters, the residents of Cobb County really don't consider this a priority. And I submit to all of you, and you're educated people, that that is an absolutely false narrative. Okay? The reason we're not concerned about public safety is because we take it for granted that when we pick up the phone, these guys are going to get there in time and save us. If you were to address any citizen of Cobb and say to them, "Look, you can have this new park, or this shiny new animal shelter, or a new library, or we can increase the hours, and the only thing it's going to cost you is three minutes more response time when somebody in your family's in trouble," what answer would you get? Certainly not the answer that you're getting now. It's time to step up to the plate, people. These people are not your employees. They're mine. It's my money you're spending or not spending. Okay? It's a disgrace. Thank you.
The next speaker is Robin Moody.
All right. Good evening, Cobb County Commissioners and Chairman Boyce. My name is Robin Moody, and I'm a 16-year-old resident in the Sewell Manor neighborhood. We are located at the Lower Roswell on the 120 Loop. First off, we're here to support our Cobb County first responders, police and fire. They've been our hero many a time, and they will be directly impacted, we believe, by your decision on zoning Z 2019-4. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your objection to date, and we are just asking that you continue your objection to annexation to the City of Marietta because it does not match, match the Cobb County future land use plan. For your information, we also have put in an open records request regarding our situation. Treaton Homes is proposing where there are only five homes and three businesses, 52 units. That is an approximately 50% increase in homes, cars, water, trash service, fire, police, City of Marietta, on approximately only 10% of the land. That's also double the school buses. Traffic for us is a grave concern. Treaton's 52 units will bring 370 personal daily trips right there at the 120 Loop in Lower Roswell. And if anyone's ever tried to get out of the QT and cross the street, they know exactly what I'm talking about. I mean, literally, I can count on one hand the number of times I've ever tried to turn left and go south there, and I've lived there for 16 years. Traffic backs up at our neighborhood, all the way to the Sewell Manor Library, every day, in the mornings and in the afternoons, starting at 4 o'clock. The turning lane into our neighborhood is already at capacity, and when this happens, then people back up onto the loop. That's dangerous. Our other concern is the lack of sidewalks. Our children already wait for the bus on the street and play in the street and ride their bikes in the streets, and there are no sidewalks on Treaton Homes' plan. And people, when they realize they can't get out of our neighborhood because there is no exit at the back, they come back right up through the front. And let me tell you, they don't go slow. Can you imagine two sets of school buses trying to cross through our neighborhood? We feel this plan is reckless, and even neighbors from the three surrounding communities are also on board with us. We are not against progress of Treaton Homes. We're just wanting a safe community for the people who've already invested in Cobb County because we love our, our low density, and we love our large trees, and that's what we're asking to, to keep. And we ask Cobb County to continue supporting your, to your voting constituents who live here and drive here daily, please support your objection and respect the Cobb County future land use map. And also, please support the needs of our first responders, both of which be directly impacted by this unsafe plan. Thank you.
The final speaker is Susan Hampton.
My name is Susan Hampton, and I live in East Cobb County. Just over two months ago, I had lunch with Chairman Boyce, and I presented to him many of the questions that have been discussed here tonight. Chairman Boyce told me at that time that it would take $20 million to fix the public safety problem. And then he challenged me to show him that the citizens of Cobb County had an interest in addressing the public safety crisis. Since that time, all Commissioners have heard from the community at Town Hall meetings and the previous Commissioners' meeting in March. Now, there is a new proposed 2020 budget. You know these numbers, but I would like to remind you. A Cobb County police officer's starting salary is $40,014. The City of Atlanta and Brookhaven starts theirs at $48,500, which is 21% more than Cobb County. In your proposed budget, there is a 3% increase for all county employees, and then an additional 2% increase for the law enforcement officers. Please note that a five-year Cobb County police officer makes $44,200. With a 5% increase, that would be $46,500. Gwinnett, five-year officer, currently would make $53,500, $7,000 more. Brookhaven and Atlanta, five-year officer, would make $59,000, which is $12,500 more. A 5% increase will not make Cobb County competitive. In addition, the proposed budget plans to cut 40 police officers and 40 sheriff officers to fund the increase. The 2% increase in the budget would cost $1.9 million. The same proposed plan to unfund 40 police officers and 40 sheriff officers would give you a gain of $1.8 million. The budget takes $1.8 million from public safety and then gives it back in a 2% raise. In other words, public safety has to fund their own increase. The 2019 general fund budget was $420 million. With the recent tax digest increase, the county will have $20 million more in 2020. Why can't the county operate under the same budget as last year and use the majority of the tax digest money to finally fix our public safety crisis? With the tax digest coming in at $20 million, the Commissioners can finally fix the public safety issue without raising the mileage rate. Also note that there are 200 budgeted open positions in public safety. There should be close to $10 million of unfunded salaries and benefits in the current 2019 budget. Even if the county only budgeted for half of the above number, there should be at least $5 million available for use for the remaining months of 2019. So you don't have to wait until the 2020 budget to begin addressing the public safety crisis. On behalf of all of these men and women in this uniform, I am begging you, please fix it now. Thank you.
Okay, so on to appointments, and I make a motion to approve the reappointment of Bob Boyle to the Cobb Marietta Coliseum and Exhibit Hall Authority. Second, a discussion. Call a question. Pass is five to zero. Commissioner Gamble.
I'd like to announce the appointment of J.L. Brooks to the Home Builders Advisory Board.
Okay, we'll start with you, Commissioner Cupid.
Just appreciate the comments tonight. And I'm not here to pay lip service, but I do appreciate the many comments that were shared and know that they were taken to heart. And we're having active discussions now about how we can move forward with, with finance and our county manager, but just appreciate you continuing to come and keep us at the forefront of our thoughts.
Hey, Commissioner. Commissioner Gamble.
Yes, and thank you to all those who spoke tonight. We are hearing you. I'd also like to give special thanks to our Cobb 4H staff, Hope Warren, Britton, Britton Lee, Kathleen McElroy, Cassie McCollum, Colleen Baca, and Willie Cohen and Allison Gilbert from AmeriCorps. They assisted 40 Cobb County students who competed at the District Project Achievement Public Speaking Contest, which was held March 8th through 10th at the Rock Eagle 4H Center. These students won many honors, including outstanding participation, highest percentage increase, and highest percentage of winners with 83% of the Cobb 4H delegation placing in the top three. Cobb 4H will also have six high school winners advancing to the state competition in July. I'd also like to remind residents in District 1 of our next comprehensive training, transportation planning meeting that will be held May 2nd from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the new Acworth Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Commissioner Burble.
Yes. I'd like to say thank you to, for all of the folks, not only the law enforcement officers in uniform, but also the supporters that came and spoke tonight. As Commissioner Cupid said, and Commissioner Gamble, we are, we are working diligently. My door is open. We've been receiving emails, but I'm also reaching out to our command staff, our officers, and I'd be happy to listen to anyone who wants to, to bend my ear and give me your input as well. I'd also like to congratulate Chief Register again as our new Public Safety Director. He will do an excellent job. And I'd like to thank Chief Kreider for stepping in as the interim director and for all he does for us as well. Now, I'd like to thank Jimmy Geese and our park staff for the work they did at Sweat Mountain Dog Park. Yesterday, we cut the ribbon and reopened the dog park that had been closed for about five or six weeks for renovations. The chairman went by last night and saw how wonderful it looks. It's really a big improvement, and it's near Lassiter High School on Steinhour Drive, next to Sweat Mountain Park. And take your best friends' dogs out there. There's a large dog side and a small dog side, and it's really made a world of difference. And as I told the group yesterday, y'all know how serious I am about my dogs? Well, these folks are true dog lovers as well. And I told the group that I think this is the first project I've ever been involved with, that everyone was happy. No complaints. Okay? So that's one slide picture. And also, as it was mentioned by one of the speakers earlier, the Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets Program, we have our 84th adoption. This is Mr. Kerner, who is a three-year veteran of the U.S. Army. He adopted this adorable two-year-old Chihuahua last week, and we'd like to thank him for his service and for picking out his best friend. And thanks to Superior Plumbing for their donation to make this program possible, and thank you to our Cobb County Animal Service, the animal shelter, for all the work they do for our veterans as well. This Saturday is the Keep Cobb Beautiful 2019 Community Recycling Event at Jim Miller Park from 9:00 to 1:00. You can visit Keep Cobb Beautiful for the list of items that will be acceptable, and there are flyers in the back. On April 28th, which is Sunday, you're invited to the Skipwells Semper 5K. Skipwells, as most of you know, was the 21-year-old Marine that was killed by terrorists at the Chattanooga Armed Forces Recruiting Center in 2015. He was a native of Cobb County, graduated from Sprayberry High School, and was a member of the Navy Junior ROTC. Monies raised at the 5K will go directly toward education scholarships from the Lance Corporal Skipwells Foundation. There are some flyers in the back, and if you'd like to register, you can go to skipwells sempre 5k runwalk.it'syourrace.com. And also, as Commissioner Gamble mentioned, the CTP public meetings are in progress, and the one in District 3 will be held on Tuesday, May the 7th, 7:00 p.m. at the East Cobb Senior Center, 3332 Sandy Plains Road. And I know Commissioner Ott has an announcement.
Thank you, Commissioner Burble. Commissioner Ott.
I just, you know, it's been a long night, and I want to thank you all for coming. I hear you, and I appreciate your comments, and I encourage you to continue coming back. I also want to put, give a shout out to the other county employees. It's been a long two days, especially with, I think today they did three briefings with three different Commissioners about funding for this loss, and so I just want to thank them for their long days, too. We appreciate what you do.
And I echo the comments of all the Commissioners, and with that, we're adjourned.